Objections, otherwise we will start with public comment. We're going to be giving five minutes for public comment here and allow people to express their thoughts on this ordinance. Up first will be Felicia Bell. If you want to step up here.
Hello, my name is Felicia Bell. I am the president of the Real Estate Investors Association of Greater Cincinnati. We represent an organization of over 900 people, investors here in the city of Cincinnati, Northern Kentucky, and we have members also in Indiana. I'm here today because within the last 48 hours, I apologize, but it's just the last 48 hours that we learned that the chronic nuisance ordinance was going to, was on the table within Norwood. And as a result of that, we definitely felt like it was something that we wanted to make sure we were a part of that conversation. And we'd like definitely the opportunity to weigh in and discuss the interest of both housing providers here in Norwood as well as rental residents with them in mind. We are here to voice any concerns, but honestly, 48 hours, we're not fully prepared to discuss those concerns. We do know that there was a chronic nuisance ordinance that was presented back in 2011 in the city of Cincinnati. And that ordinance was met with some, quite a bit of opposition at the time. We know that respective members subsequently came together after that initial proposal and ultimately that those respective members in the community were people who included the Apartment Association, the Home Housing Opportunities Made Equal, and other community members who definitely had expressed an interest and concern for the ordinance that was on the table at the time. They worked together, did come up with an ordinance that was presented and approved July of 2011. That same ordinance was recently updated in January of 2020. My specific ask today is that the conversation is delayed, at least to get us involved specifically because we do believe we specifically represent housing providers or real estate investors. Many of our members invest locally here in Norwood. And if they don't currently, they have or plan to invest in Norwood. Obviously, this is a, an area of high demand here lately. So we'd like to again engage members in the community and delay the passing of the ordinance so that we have the opportunity to share with you our experiences and to ensure that an ordinance is passed with the interest of both parties in mind. We have successfully worked with other municipalities, including the city of Cincinnati and including most recently, the city of Forest Park. Ordinances that they have passed that didn't directly have a, that had a negative impact on housing providers and rental residents within those communities. And those were issues that were not apparent, were not inherent to the people necessarily putting the ordinance on the table. So we know that our involvement has a positive outcome on, on the things that we've gotten involved with for the community, for the housing providers within the community, as well as for the rental residents. So with that, I'd like for you to take, take those comments, take, take the request into consideration today throughout this meeting. Thank you.
Felicia, F E L I C I A, Bell, B E L L.
And you're with the?
Real Estate Investors Association of Greater Cincinnati. I'm also an investor and a landlord myself.
Great, appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
And just for a point of clarity, this is just a committee meeting. So this is just where we're going through drafts and, and then something would eventually possibly come out that gets presented to council for a vote. So we're not close to a vote yet.
Not even?
Yeah, so just, so yeah, just for your information, so you're not full of anxiety thinking that we're going to vote on this, you know, like tomorrow or something.
Okay, good, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you so much. And James, you'll have five minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Jim Shapiro. I'm a real estate broker, property manager. I manage many properties in Norwood, several, and have for many years. I've been involved on and off with lots of different properties here over the years. My, my comments on the, I think this is legislation that will drive increased evictions and the issues of homelessness and lack of available formal housing in our community are a real challenge. I think the timing, as we're in the middle of a pandemic and housing issues and landlords struggling to get paid the rent, tenants struggling to pay the rent, I think the timing on this is, is terrible, frankly. You know, there's a growing gap between the needed housing and the available supply. It may be your intention to drive out rental housing and encourage owner occupants. Norwood has a fairly high rate of that. But there is a place for tenants. They are, they're working in our community. They, they support our schools, their kids are, are there. I, I think this criminal, this legislation works to criminalize the landlords for not being able to control the behavior of the tenants, but it doesn't provide any help in a period where the country is looking at defund the police, which is a terrible phrase, but it's really saying, are the right people responding to non-criminal issues? Only, you've got three categories of crime and the rest are all, you know, tall, tall grass, domestic stuff, cars, lots of things that are real issues. As a landlord, I deal with them, but to bring the police department into that, it seems like our country is looking harder at other solutions, and I don't think this is appropriate right now. You already have excellent and aggressive enforcement by your housing department and your health department. I've worked with Dale Marshall, I've worked with Jim Shelby, I've worked with Larry Brinkmeyer. They do a good job. And to turn this over as a police matter, I think is unfortunate. I'm not sure the intent behind that. It'll, it will increase the number of evictions and I know I've had some conversations this week. We just, I learned about this Monday, Housing Opportunities Made Equal and Legal Aid Society, they were asking me questions about it. They weren't able to be here today. Charles Tassel with the Apartment Association, who may have spoken with you all before. He was in Columbus this morning because his wife is ill. He was trying to get back here in time because I think he would share a lot of my concerns. As we're coming into a period where the country is concerned about evictions and foreclosures, to put this out now, all it's going to do is drive evictions. And I'm not sure that that's really the right time for that. I think the legislation lacks an appeal process. I'm not sure what the due process is. There's no real focus on helping solve these problems. It's just, you know, landlords, do something or we're going to, we're going to bring charges against you, we're going to give fines. If you don't respond, we're going to do other things. You can even take to the point of boarding up the house. But none of that is a solution that's to help us deal with our social issues in our community. And trust me, I hate going to houses and seeing the conditions and the, I deal with all that stuff. And I get the calls from Dale Marshall and Jim Shelby, there's an abandoned car, I used to manage the house at the end of Maple Avenue, that six unit building, constant problems. But we worked hard to, to address them. The timeframes, you know, two incidents in six months, there's not a lot of other mention in the legislation about timing issues. I think there's a lot, you know, I think the legislation could use some, some more crafting. And I encourage you, you know, Felicia mentioned the city of Cincinnati, nine, 2009 or 10, they proposed something, they ended up getting sued by the Apartment Association. They worked together and they came up with a, a legislation that everyone worked on together that I think has more, the processes and the, the numbers and the counts were well conceived. And I encourage you to look at that. They have, they, we've dealt with it. It came from a collaboration between the city, who was in the position you're in, frustrated with situations of rental properties, and the housing community and housing providers, you know, we worked together. And it came up with, I think, a pretty good piece of legislation. And it has more details and more of the legal process. And at one point, different things happen, because I think your, your proposal is, doesn't really have all that content there. And we'd like to, you know, as a member of the Real Estate Investor Association, I'm a board member of the Housing Mediation Service, which is an organization with the Apartment Association, RIA, and Home, working on tenant, tenant issues, tenant to landlord issues, city to landlord tenant issues. We mediate, free mediation, and try to resolve problems and keep people in their homes. So we ask that you give, you know, more time and more opportunity for engagement. I encourage you to look at the city of Cincinnati legislation. I think you may find it gets what you want, but it may, I think more effort went into it. A lot of effort went into it by a lot of organizations. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I want to say first, there seems to be a lot of different ideas of what this is, what this, what we're trying to create here is, we've got, we've got you who says that this is police enforcement, we don't need police enforcement anywhere, anywhere within this or to do with this.
The police are doing it.
However, they're involved with it, yes. They're not, it's not a, okay? This isn't all, what we're trying to do is take the five departments, put it all in one ordinance, okay? That's what we're trying, we're trying to take the five departments, Building, Health, both Public Safeties, and we're trying to put them all together in one ordinance so that we don't have four or five different departments citing under two, three, four things and having somewhere up in the area of 15 citations out of these four or five departments, right? They can cite under one, one ordinance out of those five, you know, four or five different areas that need work, okay? Instead of Health Department sending three and Police Department sending three and Building Department sending four, you know, now you're up to 10, right? All 10 of those would fit under this as one citation.
Well, 10 of those would be enough for the city to take strong action against the property owners, so. The only thing they, we can do as landlords is evict these people.
Look, we're not looking to try and do just rental. As we explained in the last meeting, that some didn't attend, this is, this also includes single family properties, owner occupied properties. My property, his property, his property, and his property.
Everybody's making this out to be that it's just a rental thing. My top five properties, neither of them are even rentals. They're all single family owned properties. They're nuisances, there are problems in the community, and they need to be dealt with, period. I don't care who owns a property, you've got to be responsible for your property, period.
And, and I would, I would go a step further, say, I think, I think there's a big misconception here on the rental aspect, and people use the term landlords, that property owners, use the term property owners, because this encompasses, encompasses all properties to owners. Landlords, yeah, they are property owners and they do rent to tenants. We're not attacking them. We don't want to persecute them. We want to hold them accountable. Because there are some very good landlords in Norwood that do background checks, or they look in to see the rental history and stuff like that. There's some that don't, and they don't care. They got some, they live out of state, they got somebody that they pay X amount of dollars to take applications and fill the property. Just fill the property, keep somebody at the property. And they turn into a problem. And this problem is, is, turns into a bigger problem for other property owners and other renters even around that one property. And the city of Norwood right now with what we have, it's, it's very hard to take action and do anything because there's not a clear process. This is going to put a clear process in play for not only, yes, renters and landlords, but regular property owners. I own property, I'm going to be affected by this. I'm not going to be able to just go out there and do what I want because I'm not a renter, no. This is something that's going to affect every property owner. Not, it's not a rent, it's not a witch hunt for rent, renters and landlords. It's just holding them accountable and saying, hey, man, you want to rent this property in order, you got to, you got to be accountable for who's there. And if you're not, and if you, if you get action on this, you get this many calls or nuisance violations, and you start getting fined, and you haven't abated it, or you haven't worked with us to try to abate it, at that point, I don't feel sorry for you. I don't. Because to get to that point to where you're getting a fine by this, that's gross neglect. That's saying, hey, whatever, we don't care. Because we're sending letters out, we're asking for you to respond to us and say, hey, how are you going to handle the situation? What's going on? We see you're in danger of becoming nuisance property. So if you're not doing that, and you get to the point where you're getting fined, you're, you're, you're not even, you don't even care about that property. You're showing us that you don't care about it. And when you start getting fined and you become nuisance property, that's, that's neglect on the property owner's behalf of not coming back to work with the city. So it's not a persecution of landlords or property owners, it's accountability measures.
I think your threshold of two incidents in six months doesn't agree with what you just said. You talked about 10, but two, you know, and I know, when I get calls from Dale, whatever, it's tall grass, a mattress left in front of a building, we go respond, we're responsive landlords. It's, it's a challenge. And I work with a lot of low and moderate income tenants who, you know, it just pisses me off too. I got to deal with it. But those are, those are residents and we're, we're working with them. I think the timing in the middle of the COVID is, you know, we're waiting to see what kind of explosion of evictions and foreclosures we have in the next three to six months. I can tell you the real estate investor industry expects to see massive foreclosures, lots of opportunity for investors to buy distressed situations. People have been paying for a few years as the market was hot. I think the timing, and I think thresholds are too low. And I appreciate this dialogue, and thank you for the time to come.
Thresholds have been moved up since the last meeting again. I don't know, I'm assuming you received a copy of the last draft.
I guess I did.
So our thresholds were moved up on the last meeting is what we discussed. So those were moved up for multifamily.
Yeah, so for multifamily, so for single family residents, it's two within six months. And I even asked this be added in. It's two and, two in six months, for a two to four unit, it is four in six months.
And then five.
And then five units plus, it's six in six months.
I think those numbers are right. Based on our experience working with Dale and Jim, and, I mean, a tall grass, a car, a mattress, all of a sudden, we're in the chronic nuisance stage over things that aren't as severe as what, and I get the real issues.
I mean, homeowners have to keep their grass cut. I mean, I, I cut my grass every, well, every week when it rains. I mean, I've got a neighbor across the street that I have just, I, I've been complaining and complaining and complaining about the tall grass. Nothing's gotten done.
You just called Dale Marshall because we have it, he lets us know.
I've called.
Yeah, all right, I'm surprised.
So one of the issues that we have, I mean, so I'm a apartment owner myself, so I own 25 units in the city of Norwood. And one of, I mean, I, there are some issues that we, that need to get resolved, and I appreciate you helping to, to bring some of those to light. One of the things that we have right now though, is that we have many out of state, like, we basically only have a criminal code when it comes to property enforcement. So yes, you get the notices from Dale, and Dale knows how to reach you, and you respond to Dale, that's fine, not everybody does that. And so Dale can just keep sending letters and letters, but we're not going to go and extradite somebody from Las Vegas or from Los Angeles that might own a property, that might live out there and own a property here, to get them into court. And so we've got to have some kind, at some point, we've got to have a civil structure so that fines can eventually just get added to the property taxes at some point if they quit paying them.
And I understand that.
And so, and so we, so I think there's a, there's some kind of a, a common ground or there's some kind of, some things that we can make, but we definitely have to get something civil on the books. Because one, we want to keep people out of the criminal system anyways, like landlords. We don't want landlords coming to court and getting 30 days in jail or something. This, this here, yeah, yeah, this here, it keeps it on the civil side. And so, I, like I said, I, you know, I do like the idea of us at least having one more meeting, committee meeting before trying to push this to council, to allow the Real Estate Association to have time to review and provide additional feedback. But I mean, at some point though, we do have to do something on a civil nature to make sure that we're protecting our residents.
I think this is a little, look at the Cincinnati one, a lot of work went into that. And it gets, it's exactly the same issues. I'm not, and I know a lot of attorneys put a lot of time into it. Maybe you'll find some content there that you can use. And their thresholds, you know, there was a lot of back and forth on that. Two incidents in six months is just, it's almost routine in some of our problem properties. And, and how do we get solutions? I mean, how do we make these people sit? And I really appreciate, first I appreciate that I have over five minutes. Appreciate that you're including homeowners, because all too often, this sort of stuff does target renters. And homeowners are as big a, when I have a nice rental home and the house next door looks like crap and it's owner occupied, I have the same issues. But I, you know, and I thank you for the opportunity. I mean, and if you want to have a sit down further, and I know Mr. Tassel would love to be engaged in this, because he worked really hard on that other one, we'd be happy to be available.
And I appreciate you coming out and giving your feedback and, and all that. I think there's a knee jerk reaction of people thinking that this is a renter only thing and attacking renters, and that's not what it is. We want to raise the quality of housing in Norwood and the quality of life for everybody around their property as a whole in Norwood. That's what we want to do.
I appreciate that. The timing, at the point where we are in COVID and what's going to happen, we're all scared to death about how many, I got lots of tenants who are months behind on rent, unemployment's raging, and it's, it's a problem for, and there's a lot of things going on right now for this to hit now.
Well, we, we started this process, at least Chris and I did, back before COVID even started. And we started researching into these things. It just so happened COVID started, we couldn't stop, we couldn't stop doing business just because COVID came in.
I understand. But COVID's going to have a big impact.
We tried to push this off as long, we could because of COVID. That's why we've kind of picked up a little bit more on the meetings now.
I appreciate that. I think, I'll tell you, having worked with your building and health departments, I mean, and I don't like the problem, and by the way, I manage 500 units. Probably 85% of them are out of state owners, several international owners, but they hired a responsible property manager. And that's, you know, when something happens, those guys know where to reach me, and that's the difference. I know there's some crappy landlords out there too. And I don't, we don't have any more appreciation for them than you do, because they give our industry, and we house roughly half the population landlords. And most of those are not problem properties. And the problem ones, I think it's important to target the right, targets the right way. And I think this is a little heavy handed. So there's my, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Next, we've got Mike.
Thank you for giving me a chance to talk today. My name is Mike White, I'm a property owner here in Norwood. You know, I didn't get an email about this. I got something about something, but it, just so you know, I think you should announce this, and you should slow down and let some people have more input. I didn't, I didn't like that at all. I think it's a bad law. I realize you want to do something about this. You can strengthen the laws you got. Maren, what he said, it's not a good time to increase police powers. This is going to have a divergent impact in the community, and I just think it's a bad idea. You can change some of the laws you got if you want, because I realize you want to do something about some of these things. I'm kind of like him. There's processes in place and they seem to work. But for me, you know, two, well, six, even the six. We had a party one couple of weeks ago, two people called. Anyway, it adds up fast, and then you're in this danger zone.
They got cited?
They did not get cited.
You're not, you're off the hook.
Does it say that here?
Yeah, it says you have to have sites. There's got to be citations. That's the, that's the whole point of that. Cutting the grass. You know, if, if you get a complaint that you, your grass is too high, Dale goes out, he puts a sticker on the thing, you've got seven days to cut the grass. If he comes back in seven days, which it's probably more like two weeks, because he is so, so busy, so even if he did come back at the seven day mark and he puts another one on there, that's still not a citation. You've gotten plenty of time to clean your property up. That's not a citation that doesn't count against you. That's what we're talking about, is once you get to, all right, you're now cited. That's, so you've already had a couple chances before you got to the site, which would be your first site. That's what I'm saying. There's multiple opportunities to be a responsible owner here, and people will just want to nitpick at the little things. That's not the case here. We're trying to make it to where my property, and I, I'm a homeowner or whatever, and I live next to crap, something needs to be done, period. I just don't understand why, why this has become so complicated. And it's not even my gig. This is, this has been Matt and Chris's gig that they brought this up. But I understand that something needs to be done. I'm the one that pushed for the task force. Because, you know, one finger's not talking to the other finger. The health department don't know how many citations that the police have given somebody, or the building department don't know how many citations, little citations that Dale has done from the health department. They don't talk to each other like that. But with a task force, they would. And they could concentrate and say, hey, look, we got a problem here. Because every one of our five major departments have got several different citations on this, something needs to be done. That's what we're working towards here. We're not trying to nitpick anybody like this. Everything has multiple, multiple, multiple opportunities to clear your stuff up. And if you don't take advantage of it, I'm like with, I'm like with Chris, shame on you.
Where does it say it's a cited only?
Well, when I printed it out, I printed the wrong copy and.
So has there been some changes yet?
The last meeting, we, we changed it to citations.
And that is helpful.
And you were at that meeting, so you heard us say that.
Yes, we talked about it, but I didn't see it in what's right there.
Correct. Because when I, I've got four different panes up here, printed the wrong pane off, and that's my fault. However, you did see, you did hear us at the last meeting, we did say citations, and now I'm going to bring that up as a discussion today. Because when a police department goes on an overdose, guess what our Hamilton, our wonderful Hamilton County prosecutor did a year and a half ago? He told all police departments, you can't cite for heroin overdose. It's a Good Samaritan law. When somebody calls for an overdose to save somebody's life, they can't cite, they can't issue a citation, they can't arrest on that. So how do we combat, combat a heroin overdose, multiple heroin overdoses within five hour period, let's say, when they don't get cited or arrested because of, because of this statement that the prosecutor put out?
Yeah, the, the discussion we're going to have is changing it to activity and/or citation, because there's certain things that cannot be cited.
Well, I mean, I think.
See, I think that's a huge problem.
Yeah.
And I realize your, I understand your points. It's going to add up fast because they go out there and instead of enforcing the laws that we have.
That's a problem as well.
If they, if they need to get together and understand and share some information, we don't need a whole law to do that, do we? If you guys are telling me that your health department and your building department, your police department can't figure out how to get a database together and know when one property is, is that really what we're doing this whole law about? There's more to it, I know. But there's other things that can be done other than this law that it basically is an attack on apartments as well.
It absolutely is not. It's, it's an all encompassing.
But see, what we're going to have to look at at the end of this is the reality of what occurs. It's a divergent impact and.
Mike, listen.
If you're a good landlord and you're doing what you need to do, this, this does not even affect you. So.
You're giving me one, and I'm going to have to be filing more evictions. I don't want to be told by you guys when to file evictions and how to deal with it. Because I had a party down the street one day and people called, they weren't cited, they didn't do anything, they came twice. Within a week, there was another call about someone else in the same building, there's 29 families there, you're giving me six calls. You know, if you want to treat me 29 times a house, that's more fair, that would be unreasonable. And I realize that you think that's wrong, and you guys are making the law.
There's, there's a lot of complaining and nitpicking going on before the discussion even happens. That's what aggravates me. Sorry if I feel frustrated. even happens. That's what aggravates me. Sorry if I feel frustrated.
Well, you had, you had the thing where the, we talked first.
Mike, 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 Mike. I'm like, I, I, I think, I think you're a good landlord, okay? We've had talks. But you like to get up here and just nitpick these little things, and it's frustrating.
This is my life.
I, I get it. I get it. But to a certain point, when it's the constant nitpicking of something that's not even there yet, that we're still, we're meeting here to work on this, not to finalize it, not to vote on it. We can't vote on this and make a law right here today. We're here to do a process. And before we can even get finished with this process, it's nitpicking and, well, you know, this doesn't say exactly that. That's what we're here for right now, is to do this process. And at a certain point, for me personally, when that's the constant, it makes me start to wonder, man, why are you so worried? Because if you're doing the right thing
I've been through it in the city of Cincinnati, and it's a terrible law. And it's just bull crap. And then you have a lot of address, a lot of apartments in one address.
Let me ask you this, then. And you can answer back at the end of the meeting if you need time to think about it. If not doing this, and you got that house or that apartment or whatever next door, that's just complete disarray and chaos, and you're stuck there, because you bought a house there, or even you bought this house and that neighbor next to you that bought a house is a terrible neighbor. How do you, how do you fix that? It's right now, there's not much we can do. So how do you fix that?
See, I disagree there's not much you can do. I've gotten, I've gotten citations for putting out trash cans too early on a Sunday. Now, I guess it maybe wasn't a citation, it was a warning. And you're supposed to be after a certain hour. So I was lucky to get someone to set them out on Sunday for the Monday pickup. But, so people are out there doing things, and it gets taken care of. I'm not, if they're not doing it, find it and put it on their taxes.
So we've got you that doesn't like and hates Cincinnati's nuisance ordinance, and then we've got another landlord who absolutely loves and adores Cincinnati's nuisance process. So, you know, it seems like, whatever we come up with, we're gonna have half and half anyway, at this point.
I mean, I get it. It's not an easy task. But an easier task would maybe be to, Mike, into some of those you already have. Thank you, John.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. White.
Please let me know when the new news are. If there's anybody who can do that, I appreciate it.
Next will be Pastor James.
Is there any way to get that off? Is there no way to get that off?
Because I think they're, it's on like a timer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, just my luck.
I think they locked the thing.
So, so Let me first start off by making some compliments, okay? We met, I was in attendance with that meeting, and there was some verbiage that was just terrible. I can see now you guys addressed that and actually changed it. And I applaud you. And I don't mean that to be facetious, I'm being honest. I also see that, you know, I made a recommendation to you all, because it's easy in the history of Norwood to make decisions. Yes, some of you might say, well, I'm a property owner too, and da-da-da-da. The issue, though, at hand is oftentimes, we make decisions, number one, without enough expert input. Now, I haven't spoken with Mr. Tassel, but I remember years ago, Rebecca Goins at the Apartment Association, a dear friend of mine, I worked very close with them on, on several housing issues in Cincinnati. And I'm, I'm telling you, one of the things that we found great success over is when we brought people to the table. And, and folks, let's just be candid. I applaud, this is huge for our community. This is huge for residents that we all serve. But if we continue to process the same way that we always process, then we're always going to get the same perception of Norwood. And to be honest, I'm sick and tired of people thinking my neighborhood is always against black people, or always against the underdog. That is not true. We have fine citizens in Norwood. We've got some great leaders in Norwood. The problem that I think we overlook is how we start a thing, how we engage a thing. I just got an email today after twelve o'clock about a major event happening, and I'm thinking, I get a notice right before, it's already planned and already done? That's how it looks to people. And now, this is just, in all honesty, this is just a discussion phase, so you all can put something together, because I do agree something needs to change. Thank you. But for instance, last time we met, I looked at the amount fines going to the homeowners. We had a hundred and fifty dollars on there last time for the first one. Then you had five hundred dollars, then a thousand, I mean, excuse me, you had five hundred, a thousand, five thousand, and ten thousand. What I applaud you all for, though, you all went back and did some more work. Now, my recommendation, obviously, and I think what Jim is talking about, when we look at more standardized protocol, if you don't sit down before you start your work, and actually meet with the experts that actually do these kinds of things, as opposed to a local law department or a police department that has possibly, I'm not here to attack our police department. But if the perception is that they're always, as Mr. Banzel, and thank God he made that comment, you know, we don't want this to be criminalization. I understand each and every one of you have a, a heart for this. This is huge for our community. I did get clarity last night, and I, and I thanked the chair for, for giving me that time and clarification, that it's not just a right now rush. I also, guys, I thought this was like right now in my face, and I'm totally against that. He gave a little bit more clarity, again, because of timing and the fact that we have not met with the Apartment Association first. What I continually see is I see that we make what I would call rookie mistakes by just not bringing the right people to the table first. Let them help you formulate what you're thinking. Let them help you look at the statistics. And right now, COVID is a major thing, right? Right? How can we start working and forget what's going on around us? And unfortunately, it's those types of steps that give people who want to point finger at us, it fuels them to say, look, see again, you did it again. And I get sick and tired of that. We have a great community. We have people that care more than a lot of communities. But if we keep approaching things, guys, the same way, so you did make some changes, you did say one fifty for the first, three hundred, now, of course, I said two fifty, and, and then you, you know, you said seven fifty, a thousand, and five thousand. I think the top end should be two thousand, as I stated before, and I'll state it again. The second thing I said was should be two fifty. I want you to go back and just pray about it. The, the third, I said seven fifty, okay? And then, two thousand should be the top. Go and talk to the experts, guys. Don't come up with something out of your head and you actually don't enforce it. Because as far as I, I'm concerned, in Norwood, I love my community, the problem that I have, and a lot of people that I serve have with Norwood, fair enforcement is key here. It's a key factor. And unless you can tell me that you can speak for the other side and how they're going to do it, I also would say, give this time to much prayer, and give this time to much consideration with experts that can actually help you formulate something. Because I know, I spent over one hundred hours between training and all of that with the Apartment Association, and going to these community meetings, a lot went into it. So these experts are coming with valuable input, so we don't have to make rookie mistakes. And I agree, guys, you're doing the very best you can. I applaud you. And as Chris, Mr. Welsh said, this is an issue, it, something's got to be done, guys. Something's got to be done. But before we start doing stuff, go to the people that really can help you, excuse me, go to the people that can really help you formulate your thoughts. Don't go to the police. Now, I'm not saying that you, I'm not saying that you have. What I'm saying, though, is get the experts involved, not the people that have the perception to lord over certain people.
Let me ask you a question. We go to, we go to the Apartment Association, or whatever, and we say, hey, let me, let me get some ideas from you. Wouldn't they want to manipulate it to the advantage of the landlords versus, I mean, we come back and they say, well, we want, we want twenty-four activities or citations before anything happens. That, to me, twenty-four, twenty-four times of somebody being at that apartment complex is just insane, because I don't think you could go back in six months and get twenty-four.
You see, you actually just proved my point. If you don't go to the experts to find out and know how they operate, then you would ask that. And I say this with all due respect, you don't even know how they do it. They've, they've put a lot, and I'm telling you, they've put a lot, and they think about both sides. And when you have a homeowner, when you have homeowners.
So how many homeowners do we bring in to ask them for their advice as well?
Well, I think the first thing we gotta do
I mean, you're wanting a rental association to come in, but we've got to involve the, the single family homeowners, correct?
I just use that name because I've personally worked with them for years.
I understand.
I don't mean them. What I'm saying is, it's your job. Find out who the experts are, bring them to the table. And then, if you have homeowners right here in your neighborhood that don't even get an invite or don't find out, which you know, communication in Norwood is an issue. So how do the people that need to be here get here if we don't have our grassroots stuff together? And a lot of times, people like me, who's very much grassroots, and most of you know that, I don't even know about it. But yet, if you ask me, I can get a ton of people here. But if we're not communicating
I didn't tell you last night about it.
No, I said, we communicated about it. Yes. What I'm saying is, you have homeowners that are affected by it. Our communication process, guys, is kind of like back in the old days. We got to come into modern protocol. And I, I'm going to sit down, I want to say this, I applaud you all, and I think I said this last time. This is perhaps one of the most monumental steps that we're going to address in our city's history. And I applaud you all, because it ain't, it ain't easy. And I think it was Mr. Welsh who said, you know, or you maybe fifty-fifty, you know, you're going to please some, you're not going to please some. But what you don't want to do is you don't want to do things in a way where it further perpetuates the mindset against our community leadership. And if we don't change that, guys, how in the world do you expect someone like me to be calm and to relax when I feel like everything is always against me based on how it's presented? That's all I'm saying. Pray about it, guys. You've done a fantastic job. And if anybody were to stand up here and say, you didn't go back and do some work, I would tell them in their face, they're a big old liar. Okay? You guys went in, you made some adjustments after the meeting. We can see the evidence of the work, guys. This isn't a badgering session. I applaud you all. But it's still, as it's been echoed, the timing, get some expert input before you even come to the table. That's part of our huge problem in Norwood. And I just see it continuing. I do applaud you, sir. I, I really do. I would not want this committee, I'm just being honest. And I applaud you, being bold enough to be the face that has to deal with the bears like me. But I applaud you all. This is serious. And any resident listening right now, you need to take a chill pill. And if you don't get involved to help these brothers, then keep your mouth shut. Because this is a lot of work. This is hard. And it's got to be fair. I don't believe anybody here has an intention to be unfair. And let me say that. This is one of the most difficult things that you guys will tackle in Norwood's history. Because as it's been echoed, this stuff is going to have some major ramifications, brother. And you leave the homeowners trying to evict somebody. Have you ever tried to evict somebody? Okay? I can send you to the attorney that you're going to have to go to. Okay? It's not that easy. It's not that easy. And I did a sublease, and I had to evict somebody. I had to pay the rent for six months. Who's going to help? Don't put this on the, on the owners like that. Let's work further together. You guys, you guys, I pray your strength. I pray that you guys continue to work together. You're tackling some difficult issues. God bless you, and thank you for, for the extended time, unless somebody had a question or something like that. So keep up the good work, guys. Keep trying, and let's just pray.
Next, we've got Becky.
I apologize, I'm not completely prepared because I, I just found out about this. I am, my name's Becky Brandenburg. I am a property owner here in Norwood. I own two properties, as well as I'm a landlord. I've been a landlord for sixteen years, fifteen, something like that. I've been through this with Cincinnati. It was very difficult. But our, I guess, a few of my issues are, which I, when I found out about it the first time we talked with Chris, is the communication. As a landlord, I'm try, I'm on my property most of the day. I'm at my property that I'm a landlord of more than I am at home. And I see what's going on during the day, but at night, I'm not there. And that's most of the time when the activity happens, whether it be a noise complaint, or, or someone overdose. Because I was one of the tenants, I mean, I was one of the landlords that a couple years ago had the lady that was stuck at McDonald's that had the overdose there. She lived at my property. I don't know this stuff until it gets to the point where we're going to get the citation. I want to act on it as soon as it happens, or as soon as I find out. And I can't go to the, I can go to the police department, just say if I went into the police department on Monday and said, what happened at this address, this address, this address? Well, what day and time? They can't, there's not a system that says, oh, at twenty-twenty-five Mills Avenue, we had five calls over the weekend. They don't, it's not structured that way. I have to have a date and time when I go in and ask them what happened. I'm asking if there's, have you guys considered something to where we can get, I can do that, some sort of database or what have you, that I can say, I can look up, or I can call and say, okay, how many, how many runs did I have at my property this weekend, or this week? And then, because I don't want to get the citations. And then, of course, if I get the citations, it's going to go to the owner, and then we're going to pay for something we could have been proactive and got taken care of. I mean, we do our background checks, we do our credit checks. That doesn't solve the problem. I mean, that doesn't catch everyone. I mean, heck, I've got a homeowner in between two of my buildings that I manage, whose property looks like crap, and nothing's been done. I mean, he just continues to, and there's animals and stuff. It, we have some of the laws in place. We have some of the people in place. And that, you know, I mean, I get it. I raised my kids here. Our kids, or Ronnie and Rachel, they're my family. So, you know, when I was coming in, I was like, he's family somehow. But, and my kids were raised with you. So we, I've been here in Norwood all my life, or pretty much most of my life. And we're also fighting, what happens if there's an incident on our property that has absolutely nothing to do with my tenants? Or no one, I fought that for the last two summers. Kids were in our property. I was calling the police every single day. I had to get my husband and my boss to stake out one of my properties, and I had to stay in my office, and we had to phone relay to get when the kids were there, so I could call the police and actually catch them. I mean, it was, it, I think there's a bigger, we have some laws in place, we just need to figure out how to get the communication, because the communication, there's a big, big disconnect.
Communication, that's why I'm not so bad.
Started, or started working to develop the task force and putting those people together in one spot. Now, I can tell you that if you go into the police department and say, I need a record for this address, and give them that address, and say, between this date and this date, they can absolutely print that off for you. I don't know where you, they can absolutely do that. Because I used to do it all the time.
I can tell you, I go, I've gone in here, and I, most of the police officers know me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I go right there to the records, right there in the store. Yes. I went and I say, I've had a tenant, uh, I'll, I'll say, like, I come in on Monday morning and, and one of my tenants tells me that the police were out there over the weekend. If I don't know the time, the lady won't be able to look it up.
Clerk of courts, then that, clerk of courts.
Right over here at the police.
Yeah, but they're in the same building. The clerk of courts is on the right, police is on the left.
Yeah.
Because you cannot, I watch them do it all the time.
We can give you, we'll give you the email, I'll give you the email address of Ron Murphy, and he would be the one that you can reach out to, uh, from here on out.
And then.
Yeah, or, yeah, it's better, I guess, yeah. Do you have?
Also, our, our building department, I love, I, I mean, like I said, I've been here for years. I personally had to stop the pouring of concrete in my driveway after coming to the building department and asking them, telling them what I was doing. I wrote up all the, the structure, you know, the whole thing. Asking for the permit, because I knew it was, I mean, it was only $20 permit, I didn't care. And I was told I didn't need it, because I was doing like, I mean, I was shown the, the rules that I didn't need it. And I'm like, okay. I get a call from my husband on that Friday, we're getting it poured, and I had to stop it because, uh, someone came by and said, we didn't have a permit. And I had to call the building department and go, I didn't need a permit, and had to prove to the building department that I didn't need a permit. And he was like, oh, well, then go ahead and have it poured while the guys had already left. So we had to wait the whole weekend to get our, so I mean, there's, there's a big disconnect with, and I know this is all.
We understand there's a disconnect. That's what we've been saying since we started this process from when we had zero people in here. Okay? Was that there is a disconnect. And again, like Councilman Gabbard here had brought up the, the fact that he was trying to put together a task force, which I'm hearing is already together and getting ready to work. That way, the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, and what the right foot is doing, and what the left foot is doing.
I'm hearing that, um, that it is said activities, citations, or whatever this may be. Or when the last one was, I was on vacation. Um, and actually, I found out, I was on vacation, got a call, and said, it's happening tonight, and I couldn't do it. Um, but activities, is that when they come? Is that a reason?
On with hearing from the residents, I'm planning on delving into how we can better define, I put a note here. How do we determine between the two activities and citations? So we're not, so we're being fair and doing it the way we want it to be interpreted. So how do we define it to where it's interpreted correctly is what I want to delve into. I made a note of it, because that is a big deal.
How can I help? I mean, as a landlord and as a property owner here, besides, I mean.
Tell me, tell me how an overdose gets clocked under this.
Well, you can make an exception. For drugs activity like that, you can absolutely put some kind of an exception in there.
Yeah.
Uh, that they don't have to be cited. You can make an except, like, uh, it was said before at the last meeting that, uh, whether one of the federal laws specifically calls out, or one of the eviction laws, specifically calls out drug activity as something you don't have to have an actual conviction on, you just need to have evidence of the activity. So even here, I think, uh, we could specifically call out drug activity in a certain way, but not call out. Because right now, I don't see where it says citations in here, and I know you said we don't have the right version, but this is the version that I had, the version that I emailed out, is, is the version that doesn't have the word citation, citations in it. So we just need to make sure that's clear. But, you know, in my opinion, I definitely want to see citations in there. And then if there's specific types of activity where it's very unreasonable to do citations, then sure, we can look at doing the activity. But most, a lot, most of this activity, it is reasonable to expect a citation.
Well, that's, I wanted to wait till we can get it further into, but I wanted to, citations, other, unless it's a nuisance activity defined where it cannot be cited. So if it's something that cannot be cited, it's nuisance activity and can be covered. Not activity as broad, but the citations being broad, where the activity is one or two things that cannot be cited, kind of like what you're saying, maybe a different look at it. But that's something that I definitely do want to get into in this meeting, because it is a big deal, and it's a change we're gonna make.
But if we have to, and I, I get it. I'm just thinking of, um, like Pastor said about evictions, or someone mentioned evictions. It is difficult to get an eviction for breach of lease or that, because then I have to have all kinds of documentation. It's better to get them off of non-payment, but, I mean, I've had people get taken forever. So if we get these, I don't want to get a citation to get someone evicted. I want to get, if someone's becoming a nuisance.
What we talked about last meeting was, starting that eviction process is abating the problem, is working with the city. You know, you might win it, you might lose it, but you're starting it, if it goes to that point. You could respond with a letter saying, this is what I'm doing to take care of the problem. You know, I've told the tenant, or I, you know, told myself, because I'm a property owner, well, I'm gonna get out and get this done. I'm not gonna have people over like 2:00 in the morning and, you know, having parties and stuff like that. You know, it's, you're writing a letter back to us, this is what we're doing, or you're showing proof that you've, you've done something to try to bait the problem. You've started the eviction process. We're not sitting here saying, we're gonna sit here and find you and find you and find you until the person's evicted while you're in eviction court. I mean, that would be grossly unjust, in my opinion. I mean, I, that's why I say, I think there's a lot of worry. Right now, I think there's a lot of worry, when there hasn't been a lot of discussion. But, but preemptive, preemptive, I'll say the word preemptive worry, because we haven't been able to have a lot of discussion yet. And we've been able to change minor things that we've been able to kind of discuss. But we haven't really been able to have a strong discussion on it yet. So I mean, there's preemptive worry and shock and all, you know, there's, there is that shock, that, oh, what's gonna happen to us?
But if we have a little bit more leeway of notification, we could have more people here that have a better conversation.
And that's something that we can talk about too, because I'm not sure they put it out. Maybe we can share it better or something like that. I mean, if we get into business of just emailing everybody, but you, that, we're gonna need like an email list for this. And if you would like to put your name on a sheet of paper, if you got an email, we'll gladly send you an email, I guess we'll figure that one out.
I was on those, but I don't.
But I know City Hall, they, I know they put the notices out.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, every, you might want to write down this email address. It's council@norwoodohio.gov.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And if you, uh, email them and just add, ask to be added to the sunshine list, they will send out an email for every council public meeting. So it's council@norwoodohio.gov, and then just ask to be added to the sunshine list. And then any, any city council agenda or city council committee agenda that goes out will, you'll be notified of that.
And I have one more, can, um.
Thanks for that, James.
I mean, we had talked about, I have, um, property where I have 12 units in a building, 23 units, 29 units, 11 and 24. If, in that six-month period, I get a problem person, I get them out, say that's in apartment one, I get them out, but within that six-month period, I get someone else in apartment one that's causing problems. Is that gonna restart the number back at zero? Or is it gonna accumulate? So I've had three instances, now I've got four, now I've got five, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get, I do know what you're saying.
So are we gonna start over if I say, I, I took care of this issue? I've written my letters, I've evicted the person, I've got him out, and now for some godly reason, I get someone else in there who's causing problems? These people caused three issues, now is it gonna be four, five, and six? Or is it gonna start over at one?
And that's something we can definitely talk about, because the way I interpret it is it would start, you get the problem person out and start over for you.
Yeah, but it's not how it's written today.
Well, that's, that's why I said, that's something we're definitely gonna talk about.
For sure, for sure.
I mean, we do have a lot to talk about. I mean, that's what we, that's why we're here, I thought.
All right, thank you.
Got one left. Ben Cox.
Oh, wait, how much still? Afternoon?
Afternoon.
Um, I was asked to come speak about a, about a particular property.
Can we get your name again? I'm sorry.
Benjamin Cox. Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, so I don't know how many of you know me. Obviously, Mr. James knows me. I went to school with Mr. Kelch.
Where do you live?
I live on Mills Avenue. Uh, I've lived in that house since 2016. The property next door to me had been vacant until earlier this year. Um, since that has occurred, I've actually, I'm pretty easy to get along with. Um, I'll try to be an adult about things and, you know, talk to, talk to somebody if I have an issue with them. Um, and it's actually escalated to the point where I've had to call the police on them twice. And then one time, when I was not home, the police were called on this property, because one of the tenants had chased the other tenant out of the property with a knife, threatening to kill the person. Um, that was, uh, I was called in by, uh, one of my neighbors. There should be record of that. And, uh, until these particular tenants moved in, I was, I was perfectly happy with where I lived. I, you know, I made some new friends as, uh, my new neighbors. I got along great with them. Um, these people moved in, and, like I said, it's, it's one problem after the other. My, uh, my neighbor, two houses down, has recordings of them pulling into his driveway and, uh, making exchanges, um, of packages and money. You can only, uh, you can only assume. Um, that has also been reported. So I'm, I'm wondering, where do we draw the line? Like I said, we've, we have reasonable suspicion, and then, like I said, this, this tenant chased somebody out of their house, threatening to murder them. So now, my children are living next door to this individual. I said, where, where do we draw the line? Do I, do I just tell my children, you know, not to go outside, because I'm afraid of what the people living next door will do next?
Have you been able to speak with the landlord of the property?
We, um, so I personally have not. Uh, my neighbor, a couple houses down, has tried to get in contact with them. Um, at first, they were, they seemed reasonable, until the, um, some of the issues that we addressed with them were, were not addressed. So he reached back out to them, and they essentially told him to, to get lost. Um, a couple of the things that he had reached out to them were just like noise complaints. Um, one of those is one that I had actually called the police on myself. Um, I work weekends. I understand, you know, people like to unwind on the weekend. And, uh, but I was woken up at, I believe it was 1:30 in the morning, because the windows in my house were rattling from the radio from the next-door neighbors. Um, the second call I made was a similar, similar call. So anyway, the, uh, my neighbor had called, had called the landlord and addressed, you know, those issues of concern among with, uh, you know, a couple, a couple of issues in regards to the maintenance of the property. Um, like I said, initially, they were very, uh, they're very polite, very cooperative, until the, the property wasn't taken care of. So we tried reaching back out to them, and, uh, we were told, get lost. So, like I said, I'm wondering, at what point do, do we draw the line? The, uh, my other neighbor, um, two houses down, Mr. Wolf, he's actually spoken with the landlord, because the chimney on the property, overhanging his property, you can see through. He's afraid that that chimney's going to come down, either damage his property or him or his son. It's something that still hasn't been addressed. So do we, do we put children in harm's way to kind of? I mean.
Now, when the police called when the neighbor chased?
Yes.
Okay. Did, were there any arrests made or?
Like I said, I don't know. I wasn't at home. Um, across the street from me lives, uh, lives Don McCarthy.
I'm glad you brought that one up, because I actually used that as a hypothetical in the last meeting. And I thought it was pretty funny that you came out and said that. Because that was actually one of my hypotheticals that I brought up. I didn't even know something like that actually happened.
Thinking of it's funny, but when it actually does happen.
No, I get it, because I used to live on Carthage Avenue, and I had prostitutes across the street, I had a drug dealer on one side, and a guy that overdosed on the other side of me. That's what caused me to leave my house, because I, I couldn't do it.
But that's my point, like, why, why do the residents that abide by the city's laws and ordinances have to flee their homes, essentially?
Right. And that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to fix. We're trying to put every, everything into one ordinance. So that all the departments have one ordinance to look at, and, uh, 25 different ordinances. They, they can look at this ordinance and go, okay, all these fit right in here. It makes it a cleaner, I think it makes it cleaner for the city to look at and enforce, look at, and also for the residents to look at and, and figure out what they need to do to better themselves.
So I'll just say, yeah, I mean, uh, Mr. Cox, he, you know, I know exactly where you live, and not, it sounds bad the way I said that, but I know where you live, and I know how, I mean, you keep a really great house. Uh, there's lots of houses getting renovated, or a few at least I know of that have been renovated, one right across the street. And then, uh, I think there's one that's being renovated now, uh, down the street from you. So, you know, we, yeah, we, this is, this is just gonna be one tool. I mean, I think, again, there's needs to be changes to it. Uh, but yeah, I think this is gonna be a tool that can help with that. So I do appreciate that, uh, you bringing that forward and, and testifying and letting us know about that.
Thank you.
All right.
So, uh, Mr. Jersey.
Just want to comment, if you would allow, a minute, maybe. Um, I just want to, because I've heard the comments, and I appreciate the comments. And as a, um, leader of an organization who looks at, uh, looks across the city about what's going on. Um, I think, I want you to walk away that there is value in having outside influences come and have the conversation with you. The intent is to not advance our agenda. Our, our intent is to make sure that all sides of the conversation are considered. And there are times when you are insular into, um, a, a community or a situation, whatever that may be. Bringing outside, um, influences into the discussion will allow you to see things that you may or may not have considered. And our interest is really for the community, for the, um, the community at large, for the rental community, for the housing provider community, and for the legislative bodies that govern those communities as well. So we want to walk away with you feeling like that we are of value to you. Um, our, our intent is to build a relationship with you, not to get involved when there's a problem, but to be a resource for you as well. So I just want to leave that final thought, um, that we don't want this to be the final conversation that we have about this ordinance, but we want to be an ongoing part of this body.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
So, Mr. Jersey, I just want to note that, I mean, I've, you know, I had to take off just some time to be here, so I'm actually gonna have to leave here in about five minutes, just to get back to, you know, the activities that I have to do on a daily basis. Um, all right, so I'm hoping that we will, I know that you all will still continue the conversation, uh, and that's, that's fine, I'll listen to it later. But, uh, I'm hoping that we can have another committee meeting on this, at least to discuss it. I'm hoping that we can, uh, you know, try to get a meeting, uh, with, I know that Mr. Tassel, I think, might have reached out to one or both of you all. I don't know if he has or not, but I would highly encourage you all to reach out to him as well, or to, to have a conversation with him. Uh, and hopefully with Ms. Bell, we can get a conversation going too. Because I do want to make sure that, uh, you know, we have to remember that this current administration, the current police chief, current fire chief, whatever, like, they're, we might all think, you know what, they're great, you know, they're not gonna, I mean, they may not have a bad bone in their body, but this law's gonna be in place long after they're gone, uh, if it's not changed. And so we just want to, I want to make sure that whatever we pass is something that is fair and doesn't rely on the benevolence of whoever's enforcing it, uh, because it's too, too strict or too onerous. So, uh, just want to make sure that's noted just to keep that conversation going. Uh, but like I said, I'll stick around for about five more minutes and I'll excuse myself.
Do you, do you have anything as far as this citation versus activity?
Yeah. So I would just say that I, uh, I think for the most part, it should be, you know, citation should probably be defined in here for the most part, but I mean, there could be some of them and I'd like, we'll just say, uh, drug overdoses, that might be one where we say that would be a, uh, that one would be one where you can just show evidence that it happened at the property, right? So versus having to actually, um, have somebody go and cite it to court over it. Uh, I don't know if, I mean, I don't know specifically if that is one. I mean, I'd have to do more research onto it because I kind of thought that we were heading towards the direction of just citations for everything. So-
Well, my suggestion, and I don't know if you like this, I want to get your, your opinion before you leave, is require citations and that the citations and/or activity part be defined as activity would be like overdoses. It's a nuisance activity. I can't really shout, yell, because I'm-
These aren't going through the, the internal speaker here.
Maybe Tyler, if you could turn on the speaker a little bit higher.
I don't want to shout and everybody at home-
There you go. He's got it. There we go. Thanks Tyler.
Thanks Tyler.
Thank you, uh, Pastor. Uh, but, so what I would suggest is, is have it be, all these other things you gotta get cited for. Something like an overdose. I mean, yeah, it's, we don't want to, you know, there's a drug problem. Now, we're not combating the drug problem with this. We're combating drug activity, constant drug activity at a property which is going to be a nuisance. So what we do is citations and/or activity and activity is defined as like overdose runs, drug runs, stuff like that. I think would be a fair way to put it.
As, as long as the activity part is, is limited, I think that that definitely helps. Uh, you know, I also, and I'll just give you my other, the other concerns that I had too. So, uh, timing between, uh, citations, I don't know, I think that was mentioned today, but, uh, Mr. Tassel definitely mentioned it to me, but right now it appears that, uh, you know, you could get one of these chronic nuisance, uh, citations, right? And then the next day, there could be another police run while you're, while you're in the middle. You might not be able to file the eviction yet or whatever, mitigate whatever nuisance that it was. The next day, let's just say there's another item that checks the box, because there's a lot of items here that could check the box. You might get that second one. So that second one is, uh, what, 350, 250, uh, one. And then maybe three or four days later, you could get another one. So I guess my kind of question or my, you know, I would just hope that we could put in here something where there is some, there's a, a period in between, you can get multiple citations because we should definitely allow people to mitigate the first one. You know, that hundred and fifty dollar one before you do the second one. Uh, the other item that I would say is the, uh, the actual cost of the citations to me is not like, I mean, I do think that we kind of go up a little quickly, but the bigger issue to me is where we talk about the people having to actually pay for any police runs or, uh, any activity by the city. And so that, I don't know where those costs start or stop. Like that could exponentially grow.
Well, if you, would you get to the point where you're paying for the man hours on the run? You have done nothing to fix anything.
I mean, especially-
You have, you have literally in like a year's time or six months' time been a pain and a thorn in the side. You've got like 20 runs to your house. Like you're, you're-
With a drug overdose-
You're not getting sympathy.
With a drug overdose, they're not required to go to the hospital. They can, once they're hit with Narcan, they can refuse to go to the hospital and walk right back into their business or walk right back, go back to whatever they were doing. Two hours later, they can overdose again, get Narcan and still not have to go to the hospital. So how, at what point do we say, well, we've got four officers on this overdose, twice now, within a two hour period, when, who pays for that? Okay. So our, just, our police officers are working, I mean, there, there's a minimum that we have. So we have six during the day and five at night. So our police officers are working no matter what, whether they go on the run or if they're just patrolling in the neighborhood. But I do agree that there is, there probably is a point where we, we could start charging, but right now it just says, once-
It's called draining of the resources.
Once, right now it just says, once the property has been deemed a chronic nuisance property, that the owner of that property shall be charged. There's no option there. It says, shall be charged for the actual, actual cost of each subsequent service by the city of Norwood for nuisance or felony drug activity for that property. So my suggestion would be that, you know, you add, you put at least the, when you get to the third nuisance prop or the fourth or whatever, when you start getting to these, when you get to escalating fines, once you hit that 750 mark, uh, for the third one, maybe then at that point you are charged at that point. But I think it's basically saying, once, once you get that first citation, then all of a sudden you're charged for every other run. Well, that could also then disincentivize, uh, tenants from calling the police, uh, when there actually is an issue. If they know that, uh, you know, the landlord is going to be charged for every police run. So just keep that in mind too. But I will say, if, I just think it shouldn't be the very first one, you're starting to get charged those police runs. And I think you may consider putting some kind of a maximum charge in there too, because I, I don't even know how much it would cost if you add up everybody's hours together. But it could be something that is so much higher than the actual fines that we don't even realize at this time that we're going to be imposing on people. On potentially homeowners too, not just, uh, rental property owners. Uh, I think that we should look at the appeals process just to make sure that that, I think we should probably try to get that button ducked a little bit more, uh, from my last, you know, I didn't have that same opinion when I first read it, but thinking about it now, just depending on the safety service director or whoever else to set up, I think potentially we should, in the legislation, set up, uh, that committee. And maybe we did talk about setting up the three person committee, but if we did, we should potentially add it on there.
It's, it's in there.
Okay, cool. And then, uh, I do think though, that the actual number of violations, so that potentially it is, uh, it's too little for such a broad period of time. So I would actually suggest just reducing the, uh, the months that it, that it takes. So I don't have an exact suggestion, maybe-
So you think like, keep the number of instances and shorten the month?
I would, I think that's probably, because that, that way you don't have to hit 25 over six months. Maybe for a multifamily, you have to hit six or more nuisance activities over a two month period, right? I mean, at least gets us a little bit closer. Uh, I still don't know if that's exactly where it needs to be, but, because I do think we need to keep having conversations, but-
So you're, you're saying, keep the numbers, but lower it down to two months?
To-
So if we do that, that's essentially almost the same as tripling these numbers, which would be-
Yes, but that gets you there quick. So I mean, you could triple the numbers, right? But, or you could lower the month. So it still gets you there quicker in the sense that, uh, by keeping the numbers the same. I mean, just my opinion on that, like if you're going to have, if you have a truly problem, let's just say a single family house, and you have a truly problem house, if you're trying to get to two or more nuisance activities, you're easily going to get that in a two month period. I mean, uh, and maybe even a one month period, but it, it's going to be something that's going to be easy to hit. So I don't know how changing that will then impact the rest of the ordinance. Again, this is why, like I said, I think we need to get our, our partners involved with the own single family houses like Ben, uh, and then our partners involved that might own some multifamily like, uh, Felicia and Jim. So, get both those, uh, feedbacks on that because it could, it could be that, maybe the single family stays, uh, maybe the single family gets, stays the same and the multifamily get treatment. I, I'm not sure, but I think that we just need to get those feedbacks.
I don't think that would be fair.
If, no, I, I hear you. I'm just saying that, uh, it would be good to hear just from everybody's perspective on that. So, so yes, I am going to excuse myself now, but I will watch the rest of the meeting.
Did, did you have any other notable changes or is that just kind of what you were?
Um, let's see. Yeah, I think that's, that's for now.
Can I ask a question?
You'll, we'll, we'll give you a little bit of time at the end, okay?
The last time-
Okay, go ahead.
What happens if the landlord calls because they're having trouble with drug activity in their property? They call the police because we're trying to get rid of the drug dealer. Is that, are we going to get ourselves on the, on the nuisance by calling up to saying, a tenant chooses dealing drugs that I can't-
Well, and, and, and that would be a case of you allowing the task force to know, hey, this is what I, I called on this one. And then the task force can look at that objectively and go, oh, okay. Well, that won't be counted then. Do, I mean, is it, when did we get to a point where we have to literally spell every single thing out per line like children? I mean, do we have to teach, do we have to make sure that everybody, every single person is told every single thing without allowing an objective?
Well, there's, there's thresholds that are going to kick off actions. I'm just, I'll give this to you guys to work out. I know that became an issue in the city of Cincinnati. The other one was women calling about their abusive boyfriends. The Women Against Violence Act protects them. If, if a woman calls that her boyfriend's beating her up. And we never screen those damn boyfriends, pardon my language. It's frustrating.
Well, there's no domestic violence on here because we cannot include that.
So domestic violence is not included?
Correct, because it cannot be included in this ordinance.
And maybe when we get to that point, maybe we can add a line of language in there that allows landlords to call, to get help without negative repercussions. I think, I think that's where you were trying to go with that? Okay.
If I could just give a quick shout out. The main thing, and it'll be quick, the main thing is really the enforceability. If you look around the country now, officers know what to do, but then some officers do it a little bit different.
We're not, we're not just talking about police here. This is all the departments, okay? Now, again, Pastor James, when do we get up to a point where we just say, okay, we'll just throw all the laws out and not worry about any of them? Because that's, that's where you seem to always come to.
Oh, come on.
I mean, you always seem to come to-
Don't, don't go there.
You always seem to come to that we don't need the laws.
No, we need, no, don't do that. Don't do that. We need laws. We need fair enforcement. That is my issue. And for the history of this community, that has been the issue or the perception. I challenge you all, number one, to just pray. I trust it's going to work out. I really do. You all are attempting to address something that's going to be historical for our people. You understand? I commend you. But on the second hand, unless you get something directly from me, please, don't assume, because if you want to know what I'm thinking, you know, I have no problem telling you.
And that's, and that's what you're doing here is you're assuming that, that whoever's enforcing this is not going to be fair. You're assuming that.
No, I'm looking at our issues. I'm looking at our-
You're assuming that.
Let's, let's not argue.
Yes. Let me, so what we're trying to do, what we're trying to do is some public comment at the beginning, we want some public comment at the end. So we can get, you know, yeah.
Keep up the good work.
So what I would suggest, uh, Mr. Jersey is adding that to definitions, item A and a fifth line in, say, with some language of effect that landlords, um, landlords' property is calling on their tenants with these problems won't be, that, that won't take effect, negative impact on them per this ordinance. Because they are working with the city actively abating the problem or saying, hey, I got this tenant here. They got drug action going on and putting it on the police radar. I don't think that would be fair for them to get deemed for that. So I think if we add that to definitions, item A, line five, add a fifth sentence in there, I think that would be very beneficial. Cause that is something I talked about, especially with Mr. Weigel had that question too. About the, the kids hanging out, outside, I believe it was, where you're like, hey, we don't want them here, but what if we call and we get in trouble for it? You know, I think it's definitely fair.
Thank you for that comment.
So, Mr. Gabbert, you haven't really mentioned any changes. You, do you have anything you'd like to change or?
No, I just wanted to make sure we clarify, uh, that this, these are citations, not warnings, not notices.
Yeah.
That, so where it says activities would be citations. And then we just define activity being, you know, an overdose or-
A non-citable nuisance violation.
But, I mean, if it's not something that can be held against you, then that's not even considered activity, you know?
So how, how are, how are we going to define it in the term of a citation versus an activity? Because like I said, you know, and it's not just police. I mean, I don't know how many citations Dale actually goes out and does for high grass or if, or if it's just the fact that he sends Public Works to, to mow the grass and then that's your citation.
So I, I know he can cite people to court and that's a big deal if you get to that point. I mean, he's, he's done, tried to work with you quite a few times.
If he gets a complaint, his first is to go and put a, a certain color notice on the door.
Green.
And then, then you've got seven days. He'll go back out at the seven days if he's able. And if it's still not done, he can put another one that gives you, I think, another seven days, at which point then he can cite him to court. And then that's when he gives the address over to Public Works to go cut the grass. And just like we were saying before, then we, we put a lien on for that payment of cutting grass. We do have other precedents of placing costs. If, if you have an, uh, if you have an auto accident, you're going to get a bill from the fire department, whether you get treated or from the fire department responding to put the fire out of your car. You know, you're going to get, if you have a wreck on the highway and you tear up our guardrail, you're getting charged for that guardrail. And so I think that there comes a point, I don't know where we want to put that in the process, but you would get charged for a response. That's my thought.
I think I kind of got a a workaround for that, for the OD situation. So we got the-
So I, yeah, I want to make sure we're trying to like go here.
Okay.
I don't want to try and jump so I can do this and why.
Back and forth, back and forth, yeah.
Yeah, I want to, so-
Were you, were you just like, like when you start to pay for the, the man hours, is that what I'm on?
So we just went through the definition stuff where I put in the landlord calling. Um, is there anything within that B section, nuisance activities?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, that's what I was going to suggest. So you add in there the number five on A, on the definitions for the landlords calling in. So what I would do is, is, is I, I noted here for nuisance activities, I put citable nuisance activities. And that'll list the things that they'll be cited for. So when we say, you need to be cited, those are the things you can be cited for. And then after number 11, before C, so after 11, which is trees, weeds, grass, fines, section 1759 of the code, maybe put non-citable activities. And there you can put drug overdoses. Overdose run, Narcan runs. So that would include, hey, these are the things you need cited for. These are the things you don't need cited for that are nuisance activities. And define it as such in there. So it's when the word activities comes up, that's what's referenced and make sure that is clear.
I'm okay with that.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Cause we're defining out all the other, more or less, all the other citations.
Yeah. So when they see activities, it's like, oh, I'm not, oh, I'm getting cited. No, you gotta be cited for these things. You don't have to be cited for this. Just, you know, proof needs to be shown that that occurred.
Do we want to go through what is citable and what is not, or what is an act, just considered not?
Well, in my, well, the way I was understanding and came up with that was all these things under nuisance activities currently be nuisance activities, but we're changing to citable nuisance activities are the things you can be cited for.
Well, a lot of them are, but again, like I said, if, if you've got a, somebody coming out and chasing their, their other tenant or whatever with a knife and the police show up.
That's definitely something that they should be citing. And if they don't cite it for some reason, then it doesn't count. But, and then that's, that's a talk we need to have with the police department.
Because the person being chased can always say, I don't want to file any charges. If we're all good, we're buddies now. And police can't do it unless they actually physically see somebody chasing them with a knife, you know what I mean?
So, so what it seems like you want to do is move maybe number one and two to non-citable activities?
Uh, at least, yes, if that-
Which is the violence stuff?
A lot of the violence stuff because-
I'm okay with that.
My master question, how do I evict this person? If you can't give them a ticket, Mr. Police Officer, how do I evict? Which are going to make me a victim then, and I could get it.
I didn't say, we're, we're not making you do anything.
Oh, that's right. I can just pay your thousand dollars and whatever you want for police call.
Okay. So have, have you read under 532105?
Well, we were using this specific example, which I very much appreciate.
Okay, okay, I understand.
I have not read the specific-
Have you, have you read 532105, tenant obligations, under the ORC? Now, under tenant obligations, it states, you know, things that tenants are obligated to do while they're, a tenant, one of them is keep that part of the premises that a- keep that part of the premises that he occupies and uses safe and sanitary. So if you've got, if you've got somebody, if you know of a tenant chasing somebody with a knife or trying to assault somebody, that's obviously not safe, right?
I cannot go to court and say, I, my friend, the neighbor
Then why is this on the books?
I can't go to court, and the neighbor, and say, the neighbor said they were chasing with a knife, and evict.
Okay, then go to the police department and get the documentation, because the police department has to put in a call for service on that.
But they didn't cite anybody, so that
They have to put a call for service in that. That means they went there, they spoke to somebody. That person, that witness can always be subpoenaed to court, whether it's eviction or not. Every court has a, has a subpoena process. You bring that witness down there and you say, this person, this person, this person all saw this happen.
But you know how extensive that is to put it on the owner? It's not, it's not that easy. You have been to eviction court?
I absolutely have. I used to help with property management.
All right, let's get back to it. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna have community talk at the end. So I mean, there's something I can go either way on. I understand that the, the fact that, you know, somebody, we can get in a fight outside, cops, well, we don't, we don't press charges, not like that. I get that. The, the drug overdose one is something that needs to be on that non-cited nuisance activity list. I mean, these can go either way for me. Yeah, there's, I think, if we don't put it there, we're gonna have instances like where, like, like this, or like, where somebody gets in an argument and they don't wanna charge. And that's, that's, that's gonna happen. It happens every day across America, I think. You know, we're not gonna fix that here in this room, but, you know, if it is a situation where the cops coming out or the police is coming out, and they're not choosing not to cite that, or they're just not going deeper into the police work there, I think that's something we can handle. So what, what we want from this is the police officer citing people for these things that you can be cited for. So I think that's the argument I can make for keeping number one and two included on this, you must cite that, or you must be cited for that list. Because it doesn't include the domestic violence, which is something they, we can't use anyway. And so I think if we keep it there, and we only put the overdoses on the non-citable nuisance activity list, I think that will still be fair and still be strong. Because if some, there's a fight going on, and we want the cops coming out and citing somebody. If it's an issue where the other person doesn't want them cited and that, we still have that call for service that we can reference down the line.
Can they be cited for a nuisance then?
What? I don't
If they call for service and the other person doesn't wanna press charges, can they be cited for a nuisance for starting a fight?
No, because who, which, which one of them's gonna take the heat for starting a fight? You're gonna cite them both? Now you're cross, now you're cross site, or now you've got a cross complaint, and judges hate cross complaints. So, again, you're splitting hairs, Mike. We've been splitting hairs with you for two meetings now. You know, I would love to have you, you know, come up here and take my position, and absolutely do this. However, I have a feeling that you wouldn't wanna do that.
I don't know.
Okay, so, we can continue to split hairs, or we can try to get our job done, this is why I put it at one o'clock, because I had a feeling we were gonna be four and five hours on this. Just because we do have people that want to pipe in and split hairs. I don't mind public input, and I don't mind, but unless we have something to where we get constructive, constructive, splitting hairs, I'm good with that. You say, hey, this, this, and this, I got a solution for you. Okay?
Well, there is, if you sign them, the problem stops.
See, I can't force, I can't force the police to cite, I can't force the police to cite them. I cannot, I cannot
Here's, here's my suggestion.
Again, splitting hairs.
My suggestion
I'm not forcing you to evict.
We're gonna have community input at the end. My suggestion is to keep one and two as it is, as citing, citable offenses needed. If the police aren't gonna cite them, then I do think that's maybe a little unfair if we have the property owner pay for that call for service, because then it's, where's the justice being done? It wasn't done for the people doing the fighting. Why should the landlord pay for that?
Okay, what happens if you get, you have three or four fights because there's a party going on over there, and nobody wants to file charges on anybody? And they've got three or four fights in the same night?
There's other things they can be charged with, correct? Disturbing the peace?
Again, it all comes down to whether they're charging or not.
Yeah, well, they should be charging if there's an incident, and they can charge, they should charge. That's what we kinda gotta tell the task force and the, maybe Chief Kramer at the meeting, and say, we want these things. We understand you're gonna give warnings for things, noise, stuff like that, but if people are fighting, being aggressive, we want them charged, you know?
I'm good with
To take action with this ordinance, we need people charged with the appropriate
I'll leave, I'll leave them under
So, and then we're gonna add in the non-citable offenses, which is overdoses, and that's gonna be the only thing under there. So that's all I have through everything until
Mr. Gabbard, you okay with that?
Yep.
Well, just, just real quick to go back to definitions part where we were talking about the numbers, where James mentioned changing the numbers or changing the months. I'm not really comfortable with going to two months, I'd rather maybe have it three months. Instead of six, with the same numbers, which effectively double the numbers, or even if we, if we have to keep it six months, double the numbers that they would need. Dump, not the felony drug convictions or whatever, but double the nuisance citations at that property. So, for single property, and this is, this is an olive branch, this is working together, this is taking input and moving it forward. I will not budge after this suggestion on this at all whatsoever going forward. If we make this change to double the single family from two to four, if we keep it six months, six month timeframe. Double single family from two to four. Two to four units from four to eight. And five plus units from five to 10. That is the leeway that I'm willing to do, I think that is fair. I think that's, I think that's fair. I think it helps. I think it goes a long way in letting, you know, landlords and rental property owners know, hey, we're not out to try to string you up. But at the same time, we are gonna expect this to be effective. I'm not sure what anybody else thinks, if they're okay with making that change. I don't think you like it.
I mean, I'll, I'll go to that, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find something to where
Well, this, I mean, this is a process, and we are taking criticism, and a lot of it is, a lot of it is constructive, but I still think it's a hard enough line to where if you got a rental property, you got 10 calls in a six month time that are, fall under this code, I think that's fair. Mr. Gabbard, do you have thoughts?
I'm okay with those numbers. I would like, and again, it's almost like splitting hairs, but let me just say why I'm asking. A definition for multifamily units. And the reason I ask is we have a Xavier house, and they get rent from five different individual kids. Is that a five unit? Or does it go by room? I mean, I, what's our definition of that? Because if anything
A lot of them are single family homes.
These Xavier, these Xavier houses, that's
A lot of them are, a lot of them are just considered single family homes, and they rent the bedrooms.
Right, so, but does that make it a unit? Because you're, you're paying the rent, and you're paying the rent regardless of the things.
I agree.
How do we classify those?
I agree, I think that's a good point.
That, that's a, a technical thing to check with the law department and the building department to see how do they look at that as, how they classify that?
Well, how, well, another thing to look at too is on the order page, how would it be classified? If it's classified as single family dwelling, it enforces a single family dwelling.
Yeah.
That's the way I would interpret it, and I think, I'm not gonna try to speak for the law department or law They're smarter in that area than me, but I think they would probably look at it the same way, of how is it classified? And we're gonna do some looking into that kinda thing too, in the future here.
That's, I mean, but I'm okay, I'm, I'm good with giving more leeway on bumping up the numbers. I just wanna make sure we have clarification, because if we gotta, if we have a Xavier house and there's five kids in there, and we're gonna give them 10 chances in six months, they're only here for nine. And, you know, something needs to be done there, so that's, that's my only, just point of clarification, more or less.
And the only other thing I really wanted to hit, and I might have an issue with, is, uh, is going to the fine structure, which I want to keep the one you put, you updated in here. I know Pastor James had suggestions of lowering that, I don't think we need to, I think we already did. Almost by half, I would note, we, we did lower, almost by half. So I think that's fair. And I will say that I do like where James' point was, you know, start paying for the man-hours, and I did, I thought at first we were talking about when you got further into that fine structure, you would start paying for that. I'm not sure where he's seeing that, it's not that, but I would like to clarify that we will do that. Like, when you reach that certain threshold of fine, so maybe after you get the thousand dollar fine, or seven hundred fifty dollar fine, and pose, I did make a note, then you start paying for the officer's hours for each run, at least set forth for that amount.
I would say the fourth offense, that thousand dollar fourth offense. If you get to that fourth offense, you know, you need to pony up and help out with some of the services that are being redirected to your property.
Yeah. I mean, at that point, you're just doing nothing to, you're not following this. You know, you're, you're doing your own thing, and you're gonna pay for it. But other than that, I don't have any problems. I think last time we worked out a bunch of stuff.
We, we did, but since there's been some things added, and, I mean, if you, if you run down and look at things, um, let's see. So under procedure, I did add in like three, four, and five, I believe it says, a statement that if a third or subsequent, subsequent nuisance citation or second felony offense has occurred at a single family property. And then if you look at four, that same sentence states at a multi-unit, or multifamily, two to four unit property. And then under five, it has multifamily, five plus units. So the number coincides with those, with those properties. So like, a five plus would be a seventh subsequent nuisance activity or second felony drug offense has occurred.
To start getting fined.
That property will be declared in this section within six months.
So after you go over this threshold, then you're declared a nuisance property, and then everyone after that, now you're on the fine structure.
Yes.
So it's not the fourth offense if you're in a single family, and that's one thing I think we should clarify. So if we're changing it to four and within six months, you get that fourth one, now you're considered nuisance property, you're saying the fifth one.
So now it's gonna be a fifth?
Yeah, so that, so if we change it to four, you're allowed four in six months.
You're allowed four.
That fifth one is now
Starts the process of the chronic
Yeah, the fifth one, you're nuisance property, and you're on step one of the, the fine schedule, you're getting that a hundred fifty dollar fine coming with the fifth one. The sixth one, now you're on three hundred and seventh. You know, so on, so forth, so you're getting some freebies here.
For instance, since we moved those numbers up, under number three, it would be fifth.
Yeah.
Number four, it would be ninth. And number five would be eleventh.
Yeah.
So you have to get 10, as a five plus unit, you have to get 10 of these before you are even deemed a chronic nuisance.
And subject to
And then, that's when the first fine will start.
So I think that's, I like, again, like I said, I think that's fair, I think moving these numbers, doubling them essentially, and that's a big deal. When you're doubling anything like that, you're giving some leeway, but it's still fair enough and still hard line enough to, to make a difference, make an impact, because there's gonna be some people that might get something happen, and, and they fall under this. But they're not near a chronic thing, and then you're gonna have some people where they get this in two months. Because they're just acting crazy out here, doing, doing what they want. I mean, it's, but it's, I think it gives that fairness and that leeway to those that are trying to do the right things. Things happen. We get it. But and I think it creates more time.
So, you know, as I go down through these, I'll change because, you know, even under, um, D, I've got if within six months, after the two nuisance citations, so now, now we're looking at four, what did we say, four? Four, for a single family property. So everything will just go up to match that top portion, yeah.
Yeah, and those changes will be there. Yeah, and then adding in the, uh, you know, where we start paying for man-hours, after you get to seventy, seven hundred fifty dollar fine comes with billing for man-hours for that offense that put you over that threshold. I think so it's clear, you know, when that's gonna start, it's not gonna be right away. You know, they do have a job to do, but if you're gonna drain the resources to get further into that process, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna pony up some of the cost.
All right, so under E, uh, let's see, under yeah, I'm not sure why they didn't split it up right.
E of which one?
So it'd be on the fifth page. Towards the top, it's got the letter E next to it. It goes through the, um, appeals board. I know it needs to be cleaned up, I, I know. I tried to put a structure in there so that we could clean it up today.
Yeah.
Trying to get a start on it, let's say
Yeah, I mean, well, the language is in there, so
For me to go through and put everything in here and say, you all have to agree that this is not, I'll put a structure in, and then we'll all figure out how that structure's gonna work.
Yeah, we're gonna have another meeting, and then I would just like to encourage that we do reach out to Mr. Tassel, invite him to the next meeting, send him this prior to, kind of what our corrections are, and just say, you know, we'd welcome your input on this, and see what they say. And, you know, we came to this, just so you all know, Matt came up with, I don't know, a 15 pager to start with. When we brought that, then the law department said, hey, looking at kinda what you're wanting to do, instead of reinventing the wheel, Middletown already has this, and take a look at theirs. And so that's where this came from, and so we're just trying to define it down to ours. So, but I would still welcome Mr. Tasset, Tassel, Tasset, I forget what his name, Charles. And just get his input as well, see what their thoughts are, and give him time to, to look over it, and come to the next meeting and share.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I think giving it to him a little bit of advance and having some, some of that constructive feedback would be nice. You know, I think we're, we're doing some, some pretty solid work here, and we are working together, you know, with, with those who have input, so I think that'll definitely be a plus. I just wanna say too, I appreciate, you know, these residents and owners and people that have, you know, real experience with it for coming out, I appreciate it. You guys are taking time out of your day to come. You know, if there's a little frustration or tension going, I think it's because we're still early in this process, we're trying to get something. that's nice and structured that we can easily change if need to be changed before it is a final product. Um, it's a lot when we haven't really been able to go through it all. You know, we got through it all last meeting. Um, and we were able to make some changes. And then today was going over, hey, you've had it for a while. You sat with it a while. What other changes can we present? Mr. Bonzal had some and, you know, I even had some. Um, and that's how it's gonna, that's how it's gonna become a finished product. I think, you know, having like someone like Mr. Tassel come and say, hey, boys, this is what I think. I had time to look at it. I like this. I don't like this. And explain why, whether we end up making that change or not, just hearing him out explaining why. He's got experience in that industry. So I think that's, that will definitely be huge. Um, and just touching on the appeals process, there will be an appeals process. Alright, so you're gonna get, we just doubled the leeway. Alright, we doubled the leeway. We lowered the fines almost by half. I think that's, I think that's breaching out and that's taking criticism and being fair. Um, and there is an appeals process. So if you do feel like that you are wrongly in this, you can go to the appeals process, the appeal board, which we're gonna figure out how we're gonna set it up and who's gonna be on it. But it's gonna be citizens in Norwood. Who appoints them? I don't know. We still gotta figure that part out, but there is gonna be an appeals process. This is, this is by, the only persons or peoples that this is meant to attack are those that don't wanna do right. Those that wanna just do their own thing and be a nightmare to neighbors and other property owners or other residents. This isn't meant to attack single-family homeowners, landlords, renters, like it's not meant to attack any of them. It's meant to bring a better quality of life around you. To be able to go outside and, and not have to worry about somebody chasing somebody with a knife or looking at your neighbor and it looks like Jumanji over there with the grass, you know? I mean, that's all this is. Cause that does, that does put, people who look at all the grass is a big deal. It is a big deal. Rats love tall grass. Smorgasbord, it's an ecosystem. It's shelter from birds, prey, stuff like that. I mean, it is a big deal. It is a problem. Um, snakes too. I'm a person, I hate snakes. I don't wanna see no snakes and snakes love tall grass. So there, there are things and there are reasons this is needed and we want to handle those. We wanna fix those. Um, can somebody get, you know, hemmed up in this process that doesn't need it or it didn't deserve it? Well, absolutely. It's not perfect. But that's why we're gonna have that appeals process. That's why we're gonna work together and we, we strengthened this today, I believe, by extending the numbers. You know, we lowered the fines a little and make it more fair. So it doesn't appear to be, you know, what it's not intended to be. And I think that's, that's good on us and that's good on you guys for coming out and giving your input and feedback on it. So we definitely appreciate that. It's, this is going to be something that we're gonna have to work together on and I think we just did that today to make this better. And it's gonna even get more better whenever we figure the appeals process out and iron that out. I'm sure Mr. Tassel will have some suggestions, so. But yeah, I definitely appreciate you guys coming out today.
Agreed.
So are we, are we done going over this for the day?
Yeah, I, I think so. I think we're in a good place with it. We got some-
Yes.
I'll for a comment. I'm a, I'm a property manager. You're trying to fix some of the biggest challenges in our society. Crime and drugs and irresponsible behavior, domestic violence, violence. We hate this stuff too as landlords. I spent hours screening tenants. We turn down between forty and eighty percent of applicants. And then we, we approve people and then the boyfriends come in and they're doing, most of the drug activity I deal with in my rental homes is unauthorized boyfriends. And, you know, so my choices are evict these women and their kids again. There's some really big challenges I should say. And I get, I hate this stuff. I get the phone calls Sunday morning. There was a fight next door, your house, blah, blah, blah. It's, it is, I just want you to know that from the landlord perspective, we hate the issues you're dealing with as much as you do. They drive us crazy. The police come and the, and the woman says, oh, don't press charges. And I wish they'd all pressed charges. The police don't wanna put the time in because they're gonna go to court and the judge will say this was absurd. These are, these are challenges in our society. And, and it's hard to, they're all being put on the landlord with the result going to the law enforcement. I don't know how to get around those problems. I, I get what you're trying to do and I respect it. And we, this is the same things that, that destroy our income or our properties.
How do, how do you want us to fix this then? We've had an outcry from residents to, to fix the problem. And like I said, I don't mind the back and forth dialogue or the comments. Come with me with an answer. Come to me for, with an answer.
The problems of society and the only thing I could do is evict these people. And I, I don't have the answer either. I'm just sharing with you.
You're saying all you can do is evict and he's saying he can't evict.
Well, we can, but it's-
Again, we're on two sides of the, we're on two sides of the fence.
Well, I, I think what the frustration is, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you feel that you're a good property owner, a good manager and all that stuff, and you feel like that this might negatively impact you when it doesn't, when you're doing right. You're doing all the right things, making all the right moves and you're worried this might negatively impact you and I get it. I get it. And that's why we're trying to loosen things up, but we can't loosen up so bad, so much that, that these, these bad property owners, these bad landlords fall through the cracks and that's, and continue to have these problems. You know, I can, I can reference this and I can only reference this as gun laws, okay? Gun laws tend to hurt responsible gun owners. Criminals don't follow the laws anyway, right? You know, and it, and it's something, it's, it's a, it's a byproduct that sucks. It does suck. But that's not our intent here. And I think it's a process that we're gonna put, put a lot of thought in to make sure that good quality property owners, good quality landlords have every reasonable avenue to, to not be harmed by this through an appeals process, through ironing out exactly what's going on here. Okay, we understand that you can't, you can, you can try to evict anybody, but are you gonna win everyone? No. You might not. And part of this too is when you, when you're in danger of becoming a nuisance property, we let you know, hey, you're in danger of becoming a nuisance property. You write us, say, we're evicting this person. We're, we're not gonna sit there and continue to give you violations for that property because you've, you're working with us. That's what is being very undersold and very un- undervalued in this is just cause you're starting the eviction process, I think people are thinking you're, you're still gonna get cited for that property and it's gonna violate against you. And now you're gonna get all these fines while you're in the process. That's not what we wanna do. We're trying to create every opportunity for responsible property owners, responsible landlords to not be affected by this if they don't deserve to be.
I appreciate it.
And, and if, and if that's not clear enough, then we will definitely delve into that one, I believe, next meeting and make sure that's understood. If it's not.
Chris, I get what you're saying. I truly do. And we're a property that obviously like the rest of the people here, cause the ones that don't care aren't here. Um, but we're the ones that get caught up in doing the right thing, doing the appeals process, taking, my boss is paying me to come to do this when he really should be paying me to do X, Y, and Z and I'm over here doing A, B, C, which shouldn't be happening. And I get, I get where, where you're coming from. My, my question or my concern, I guess I should say, and I don't have a solution and I wish I did, sir, cause I don't know his name.
It's Mr. Geraci.
Geraci, okay. Um, and if I did have a, a, a respective solution, I would, I would present it. But what happens to the, the out-of-state landlord or the landlord that, or the owner that doesn't care about their property? You, you've gone through the citations, you've gone through the whole process, you're starting to find them. And you keep finding them, however, those people are still there and they're not doing nothing. Where do we go from there? Does, do you guys think that?
It's already in there.
Yeah, we would keep finding them. Then they would, every time after that, they would get that, I think it's three thousand dollar fine. Now that max fine, they would get that every time. And we would use it as liens against their property. Yeah.
On the sixth page-
And it would be sold at auction.
On the sixth page under D, right down there, spells it out. Basically says, "In addition to other relief ordered, a court of competent jurisdiction may authorize the city of Norwood to physically secure the property against all access." Which means we will take that property if they haven't paid and if we've got a lien on their property, we will take that. Now, out-of-towners, you know, that's gonna get their attention. We have to find something to get their attention. If they're not, if they're gonna say, huh, five thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars there, and they're just gonna let it, let it build up, we'll just put a lien on it, just like we do homeowners, that they don't owe us taxes. We'll just put a lien on it.
And that's something, that's something next meeting we have. I'm not sure-
And that could benefit any of you property owners that say, ooh, ooh, give us option to buy this.
Mr. Geraci. I'm not sure, I was, next meeting, that's something that I think the law department will go on to. I don't know if they were notified of our meeting.
They were.
They were? Okay. So, uh, Mr. Gary? Or Keith Moore?
Keith, because Mr. Gary's out of town.
Oh, yeah. So our assistant law director's out of town right now. Uh, Keith Moore couldn't make it. Um, but that's something that he would be able to talk more on, in depth on, that process of things. Um, but definitely next meeting, maybe we can go more into that angle of it. And kinda, hopefully, you know, him or Mr. Gary, he's very knowledgeable on this stuff, can kinda give a better explanation of what that process would look like. Um, that's really the, the properties we really wanna go after are the ones that aren't here and don't care. Um, the ones that are working and doing good things, we don't wanna mess you guys's- A copy of this? No, you, what you would get on there, I believe, is, um,
You'd just get an email to find if there's this, but then you can call clerk of council and say, hey, or the, the chair and just say, hey, is there any updated thing that you can email me?
Yeah. And Becky, you got, you got my email. If you want a copy of it, just email me and, and I can send you one. Yeah. That's fair. So what, what I do is, I'll have Mr. Geraci send it to me. You can email me and, and I think I still have your email in my inbox relatively uh, from not too long ago. And I can send you an updated one and you can read that. And anybody else that kinda wants to do that as well, just make sure I got your email and I can try to get whatever I can out to you. But yeah, definitely go to that council at norwoodohio.gov and get on that sunshine list to get the agendas.
I'm gonna stay in because of the I wanna say this. I wanna say this with all due respect. First of all, Mr. Gabbard, I really appreciate your input. There's something that comes with wisdom that you can't get starting out. It comes from years and years and years. And your wisdom shows. Now, I also wanna speak to, if any resident thinks that what I'm saying is for them to piggyback me with anything they've said negative or derogatory to any council member or any committee member, that's not true. I wanna be able to show that we could have differences, but we can part, still respecting one another. So I don't want any resident saying, oh, Pastor James jumped on him and Mr. Geraci. No, I'm not piggybacking with anybody. But I will say, when you have people coming forward, when you use the term knowledge of nitpicking, or when you focus on, well, as long as it's constructive input, nobody gives them their time to just waste their life on yours. And part of the problem is, and even when we said, well, Mr. Tassel and others, but not that, we may or may not take what they say. That's a valid comment. But I just want you all to remember how people perceive your intro is how some of the ramifications walk out. And I wanna close by saying, this is gonna be humongous for the history of our people. When I say our people, I'm not talking black people, white people. I'm talking us Norwoodian people. So I, I applaud all of you. And anybody in my neighborhood who would talk down to any one of you, they have some issues. But I do want us to make sure that when people come out, make sure Mr. Geraci has the chair. Make sure when we have an attack verbal or whatever, make sure we just address them. Maybe you add a hint like, yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. I hear what you're saying, sir. And then state the disagreement. Because when we get huffy and we say, oh, you're nitpicking. Or if you make a direct challenge and say, well, it seems like you're always against the law. I mean, if you haven't noticed, I'm an African-American man and I'm being told that I'm against the law. Just those kinda comments really infuriate people that are already thinking that there's an issue. Especially when the law department's not here to give clarity of the interpretation and the application. That's how we can continue these false perceptions of people who don't even live here, guys. So when you have a disagreement, hey, I'm good. You can have a disagreement with me all day, sir, but I'm gonna respect you. I'm gonna give you that respect. And I, and I trust from the bottom of your heart, I don't think there's anybody else in this community that God could have chosen to really take this humongous of a task head on. So I applaud you with that. I just wanna make sure when we're talking to people, just make sure we make, try to make them feel
And, and I understand where you're coming from. I understand where you're coming from. I've, I've been the subject of attacks for four months now. Just-
Unfair.
Just, just, just to attack me, okay? Because of my name, because of my age, I don't know. He's younger than me. I don't know. He is?
Yeah.
Why are you being attacked over this?
Well, a lot of different reasons.
Lot, this, a lot of other things, you know? Every time that I've, I've brought something to the table, it seems to be attacked or I get stonewalled. I get frustrated, okay? I've had three other, three other ordinances just like this that I've brought to the table, either the law department or something, and it's just been killed before it's even gotten to the committee. So when, when you try to do something to push to, you're actually trying to make change within the city and you're being stonewalled, it, it gets frustrating, okay? Now, when I, when I was a resident and I suggested some sort of change for the city, I was told, bring me evidence. What do you want? How do we fix this? That's the only thing I ask is if somebody comes to me and says, I don't like, I don't like this. I don't like this. What do you not like about it? Why do you not like it? Bring me something to change it that makes sense for both sides. You know, I, I don't wanna see, you know, an uprising of landlords come in and say, well, ten, ten, we gotta move that to twenty. Well, that, that, that's unfair for twenty. I mean, we're trying, we're trying to make it known that if you, if you want to have, if you, if you wanna have rentals in Norwood, if you wanna own your house in Norwood, be a good neighbor. Don't. I mean, I, I had to move out of my, my first house that I ever bought because of prostitution, drug dealing, overdosing, needles in, in the driveway, needles, needles on the sidewalk. I mean, it was just absolutely ridiculous. And when you, when you do call the departments such as building department, health department, you don't get help. I'm even a council member. I call them and I still don't get help.
That's, that's, that's part of the whole mindset. And so, and not to cut you off, sir, but if residents have experiences and when you have valid examples and you all are in charge of it, but yet your experience might be different from everybody else's, there's some disconnect happening. And my thing, cause I don't like to just, I do talk a lot, but I like to come with solutions.
You abso- you absolutely do and that's-
So my first thing is, and Mr. Gabbard, and I, I'm not trying to put you under the bus, but when we have wisdom- So my first thing is, and Mr. Gabbard, and I, I'm not trying to put you under the bus, but when we have wisdom and it's sitting right in front of us, don't let some third party, and I understand the political process, say, well, hey, you gotta get this done, you can't have fifteen pages, you gotta have two, and it's like, oh, well, how can I do that? Well, the first thing we should do is just look amongst you and see where the wisdom is before you even start a process. And be bold enough to tell those that continue to create status quo mentality, that will, sir, ma'am, I'm gonna have to lean on some expert advice before I even get started. So that when the experts give you years of wisdom, now you take the wisdom first. And whoever doesn't encourage that process, then there's a mindset they have, and then you've got a group of people out here looking at their mindset going, well, you only care about certain things anyway. And then when you've got Chris saying, hey, no, this ain't for the bad ones, this is, we're trying to help protect the good ones and, and get the bad ones out. Well, we all agree with that. But it's the process, and when you say, well, I gotta get this done by such and such time because they're saying, hey, you're new on council, you need to get some meat, so here's, go ahead and take this. Well, that's not a fair process to you and to anybody that supports you. And that's what I fight against, because it still shows status quo working out. So I'm gonna close with that. Mr. Gabbard, I just wanna say publicly, your wisdom is very much needed in this council. Not because they're not good people, they are wonderful. But sometimes when folks are just brand new, like they're just walking to things innocently, and it's not fair, the criticism that I've been hearing, this, this gentleman's been taken, because people already have their minds made up. But if we get wisdom and lean on that wisdom, don't just say, well, I'm not sure if I'm even gonna listen to you. No, say, hey, come to the table, help me draft something that's already worked, already proven successful.
See, and that's, that's what we did with Middletown, and we got so much support already.
And that's the thing, is this, we went to this based on our law department's recommendation. We go, we look at that, that's been vetted. They, I mean, they've been through the court system and it's, so why invent the wheel if it's already been taken care of and vetted through this whole kinda process?
But another professional group that's worked with all of these municipalities could tell you then, that worked for them because of how it worked, but your demographics or your situation matches closer to this.
And that's why he brought this to the table, was because their demographics and their.
Very, very similar, if not almost identical.
And Mr. Bonzel went over that with you the last time.
And I, and I'm, if Mr. Bonzel will sit here again, again, numbers don't always tell the specifics. It's those things in between the cracks.
Like median income, stuff like that, yeah.
To avoid, all I'm saying, guys, you're, you're attacking something that, guys, my hat's off to you, it really is. I'm not here as a, as a, you know, against you, I'm an advocate here. This ain't easy. But when you have professionals, the mindset of our leadership has got to go to them first.
So if we go to him, because he loves Cincinnati's ordinance, okay?
Well, I don't think he loves it, I mean.
Okay, he likes, likes Cincinnati's ordinance.
Likes.
But then, then you've got Mike over there, who despises Cincinnati's ordinance. Where do we go there?
But, but no, and then all, okay, so Mike, cuz Mike's a homeowner, I'm not talking about that. I'm saying go to the ones like Mr. Tassel.
Tassel is the best guy you guys.
Go to Mr. Tassel.
Yeah, we're definitely planning on having him come next time.
First, and the problem that I'm seeing, guys, and, and you're right. If the law department comes to me and says, hey, this is Middletown, matches what we're doing. Well, you have another mindset out here that says, well, when you hand that to him, I question what your, what your, your motive is. The way you eliminate the perception, that's all we're talking about. Just eliminate some of these perceptions. As long as you got a brother like this sitting next to you, there's nobody in this city.
And I, I get where you're coming from.
His intention, and I'm not saying this against you guys.
Thank you, Brad.
That his intention is not right for the city. But don't hand him something where now he's got a partner with it and it's crammed because some third party said, hey, and now get it done. We've gotta learn to stand up and say, hey, I'll get it done.
First, first off, the law department didn't come to me and say, hey, we need this chronic nuisance. I called him probably.
I misspoke, no, no, I misspoke, I'm just giving an example. Whoever is cramming us not to have so many pages, whoever's cramming us to make a timeline before we talk to others. Guys, all I'm saying is you're doing a great job even addressing this. I don't mean, I don't want anybody to walk out of here and say that you and I are not on the same page, because that would be a lie. And I'll stand up against any resident who gets on any site and challenges that, cuz it wouldn't be fair. Understand?
And I, trust me, I use his wisdom, ass.
You're setting me up to be somebody that, that's much more than I am.
Zeus himself.
Yeah, I appreciate the kind words and everything like that.
I'm gonna give honor to where honors is due.
You know, I, I appreciate your kind words, not just to me, but to this committee, and, you know, this is a tough task. It's not a, it's not an easy task. And it's like any ordinance that we bring down, resolution, whatever, you're not gonna please everybody. So, you know, part of this is for property owners of single families, which, like I said, that, that, my top five are single-family homeowners like that, that's the problems, and business, and business. And it's not even rental, but there's a rental component in here for multifamilies, so we do need to get some more input, and that's why, you know, I just encourage at the next meeting that we invite, you know, Charles and see what his thoughts are, let him have time to look over what we've come up with so far and go from there. Mike, you had a final word?
And I was like, did, did, did we send this updated copy to anybody at the law department?
I just sent, the one I was doing on the fly right now, I just sent over.
I'm saying before we came in here, this one, the draft, this was sent to the law department?
They, they saw, but neither one of them has had, I mean, Tim's been out and, so, what I just did, just now was just sent them the one I was working on on the fly here.
Alright.
And sent here.
Yeah, I was wondering, I was wondering if they, if they looked at this before we had this meeting today to, to give any.
I asked about it and.
Well, with only Keith in there.
Yeah, he, he was, he was extremely busy.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt.
With my email, and it took four or five times to send it out. And he was like, I wouldn't have been able to look at it anyway, cuz.
So do you ask them, are we, you know, you want, you wanna try to plan another meeting right now?
I would give the law department and then also see when, you know, Charles could be here.
Well, I mean, not, I mean, for an advance, like a week out or maybe two weeks out?
I would check with them first.
Yeah.
Check with the law department.
And I would find out, I wanna find out at least when one of them can be here.
And see, and, and I would ask that Tim be here, just to, you know, be able to clarify some things, yeah.
Since he went over the Middletown ordinance and.
See what I mean, text me. No, no, you guys are doing a great job, and, and I will make sure residents know my feelings on this. You guys are doing a great job, and I just feel like maybe sometimes how things are perceived. You guys are doing a great job even addressing it, and our law department really does care. And Mr. Moore, and I wanna make sure if he's here or if somebody tells him, I'm not against Mr. Moore and their job that they have on their plate. And when they're short-staffed, it's rough, they got a lot of stuff to address. So I know you guys are all gonna keep working together and get it closer, and every time you've come together, you've got me closer and closer, so. And thank you, Mr. Kelsch, just Kelsch, I'm sorry, tongue tied. Thank you for acknowledging those that show. That's been one of my biggest pet peeves, folks show up at a meeting, people don't even say hello to them, they acknowledge them, that's big.
Yeah, we, we, we want you guys to come out, we want the residents to come out, land, landowners and property.
Whoever, but the fact that, that city leadership will acknowledge them when they're here, brother, that's huge. And I've been fighting that for years, since 2015, and we're just now starting to see people like you step up and say, hey, guys, you may not all agree, but thank you for coming, let's keep working together. That's huge, that's huge, and I wanna take, you know, take time and acknowledge that.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Anything else?
Where's lunch?
Alright.
If there's nothing else, I guess we'll adjourn.
Thank you.